Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to get tonight's meeting started. I would like to call to order the Oregon City Council Committee of the whole meeting for August 4th, 2025. The time is 7:00 PM. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is a committee of the whole meeting and attendance is not required for council, but all seven of us are present tonight. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Mike Seferian, City Administrator Joel Major, our Clerk of Counsel Josette Snyder, our Law Director Melissa Papora, Public Service Director Paul Roman, Assistant Chief of Police Ryan Spangler, our Fire Chief Clayton O'Brien, our Assistant Fire Chief Mark Mullen, our Finance Director Nick Roman, and Deputy Finance Director Angie Sheehan. Our first order of business this evening is persons in delegation. We have three people that have signed up to speak tonight. Our first is Steve Dunaway. Mr. Dunaway, if you would please come up, name an address for the record.
Steve Dunaway, 24 South Coy, Oregon, Ohio. First, I just want to say thank you to the city for when we did the thing where we sent out the little thing about the aggregate and really being concerned about your electric bill. Because, yeah, my electric bill went up. I did stay with the aggregate, but I feel really, really good because my neighbor back over behind us, they followed the recommendation of someone on council that you should shop around. Eighteen cents a kilowatt, and this bill was just shy of $1,000. And his kilowatt usage was less than mine. Now, my bill went up. I will not say it didn't. I keep my house cold, but $400 is a whole lot better than $1,000. So I wanted to, I think the city and the city administration and Josette and Cassidy for making sure that citizens knew that we, yeah, the aggregate is there and we should do something because we still have one component that has not been added to the bill, and that's coming in January. We got hit with the capacity rate change with Toledo Edison, but the one that's going to be a big one is going to be for all the transmission lines and the distribution, and it's not small. You think your bill's high now. Nine point seven is not going to be where it's going to be. And that's just a generation. It's going up. And we're going to be closer to what the average in Toledo is, but Toledo's rate will go up on top of that, so we'll still be lower on the aggregate. So I thank the city for that. My basic reason, I have a question. I already know the answer to it, but I'm going to point blank. It's either going to be the mayor or it's going to be Joel that's going to answer this. So I'm going to throw it to Joel, okay? Little something that was on Instagram about a piece of property over here on Wind Road. Now, as far as I know, and I've verified this, the city of Toledo owns the piece of property, and it's a very substantial piece of property. So my question to the city administration is, are you guys doing backhanded stuff and not letting anybody know and negotiating on that piece of property?
Mr. President.
You're up.
Okay. Well, the reason I ask, I made phone calls. City of Toledo has not been told they don't have to dig their big puddle. And their big puddle is not going to be pretty. It's going to have a 12-foot embankment around it. It's going to have razor wire on fencing with huge bright white lights at night so you can't go in and poison that water. And it's just not going to be a big puddle. It's going to be a processing facility.
Mr. President, if I may, so actually, staff did meet with the city of Toledo. It was me, Mr. Roman, and Mr. Rodney Schultz to talk about the waterline improvement project. And we did talk about their plans for the reservoir facility. And I, just for my own clarification, I wanted to know from them what this facility would look like. And they said basically that it would be a six-foot chain link fence with barbed wire on it. And it's actually a 20-foot embankment where they would dig out a large, you know, the reservoir site. So this is 135 acres on a piece of property that they had purchased in 2023, I believe. And that was the, you know, the conversation is that, you know, is this project real or not? And to them, this is, and this is the engineering team over at the water plant, and that's running the project. And the Director of Public Utilities was there as well. So, yeah, they verified that, yeah, this is a, it's a real project to them. They are designing for it. They're in the process of that. So, and that is the primary location for their facility. They already purchased the property. I believe they spent somewhere in the neighborhood of $35,000 an acre. I believe it was $4.7 million if my memory serves me correctly. So don't quote me on that. Just off a memory, that's, if that's what you're asking, that's the answer.
Well, yes, because one of the things I found out with my, my research, city of Toledo is a municipality. It's a government entity. The land over there that they purchased is presently zoned low-density residential. Its usage is agricultural. All right? They don't have to ask you guys for permission. They are a government entity with a utility. That government entity with a utility can basically dig their hole, correct?
That's correct.
That is correct.
It's called a use by right.
All right. So my thing is, the statement that was made on Instagram by a member of this city council was that you guys were doing shady stuff in the background to put the new data center there. I don't think the second data center is going to happen. So I did some additional phone calling, and that because of those comments, I just want to bring it to council's attention. That when you have an issue like that, and it becomes either in print, video, social media, anywhere where, and it's possible that you know that it is not true, it violates of the Ohio revise code 3517.21. I have made my phone call down to the Election Commission, and I will be filing a complaint because such telling a lie, essentially, to inherently change the outcome of an election where the electorate might think us, we think that one thing is true because someone on council would be saying it, and it's an outright lie. It's an outright lie. It's incorrect. It's an outright lie. It violates this section of the Ohio revise code. I have the paperwork coming. I will be filing the complaint.
Thank you, Mr. Dunaway. Up next, on our list is, is it Amy? I'm sorry. Amy Mott Miller? Ms. Mott Miller, if you would, please name an address for the record.
Sure. My name is Amy Mott Miller. 5040 quarter. I rode across from where he's talking. But I came to talk about the data center. So I come before you tonight as someone who loves Oregon, Ohio, not just for what it is, but for what it still can be if we make thoughtful, community-centered decisions. I recently attended a rezoning meeting for the proposed data center, and I have to say, I left with more concerns than hope. I heard statements like Oregon is in dire straits, which frankly feels like a scare tactic, especially when in the very same breath we're told that the city is spending thousands on things like boom fest. If we're in such trouble, where's the caution and fiscal responsibility? Worse, I heard repeated claims that council is being supportive of the people. But are you truly listening to the people gathered here? Engineers, researchers, and everyday citizens who take their time to read and study and speak up? Because what we're seeing is being drowned out by promises that don't match the risks. Let's talk about those risks, starting with one, you can't put a price on our night sky. Rural Oregon still enjoys some rare, true nighttime darkness. That darkness is more than just aesthetics. It's peaceful. It's heritage. It's ecological balance. And yet, with the data center comes industrial-grade lighting pollution, from perimeter floodlights to 24/7 security lighting. In rural areas, that kind of light does not just stay on the property. It travels a mile or more away. Families will see the glow. They'll lose the stars. They'll lose sleep. Wildlife will lose their natural cues. Are the people living within the mile being told the truth? Are they being told that they'll lose the night sky? That this facility could affect water pressure as new infrastructure strain our systems? That local electric rates could rise to support the increased demands for the new system that we, the community, didn't ask for? Because these are the realities, we deserve transparency about the data center. They're not walkable businesses. They don't bring vibrant main streets, family events, or even full-time jobs. They bring fences, heat waste, constant hum from cooling systems, and yes, light everywhere. And the worst part, once it's built, we can't take it back. I urge you to ask yourselves, are we doing this for the community or to the community? Oregon, Ohio is not in dire straits. It is at a moment of decision. We have a chance to choose preservation over pressure, people over profit, future over short-term gain. Please hear us. Please pause. Please protect what makes Oregon worth living in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mott Miller. Next up, for to speak tonight is, I believe it's Aaron Gray. Mr. Gray, if you would, please name an address for the record.
1026 North Colsono Road, Oregon, Ohio, 43616. Came back up here tonight to talk to you guys about item number 129, 2025. Had multiple conversations with Joel about the situation. Was on vacation last week and was able to listen in on one of the meetings where the mayor, you guys had talked about the situation a little bit. The mayor brought the fact that apparently the contractor was the one for the delay and that they were pending litigation against us. The frustrating part about that is, Joel, in one of our numerous contracts or conversations that we had, did you or did you not say and apologize for the four-and-a-half-month delay for not being able to get the paperwork out to us because you guys were focused on other stuff and finishing the scope of work? And that's why Rodney was not able to get us out in a timely manner.
Mr. President, Mr. Gray, I, no, that's not the case. We are merely, as I stated numerous times, with you and everybody else, the city was only involved at an arm's length to assist the OJHS in completing that project. I don't know what else to tell you, that they were working out an arrangement with you. We were brought in to help assist with developing that scope of work, and that's when the delay from, I don't remember off the top of my head.
January until April.
So whatever that, those dates, that gap in between, you know, again, we were, you know, involved at an arm's length because we were there to assist. We tried to help them get on the path with you from whenever that was, January. I don't know who you were speaking with back then, but it was, I believe it was maybe Rodney and really primarily the OJHS personnel.
Well, the meeting had started with you and Paul directing that meeting, our first meeting in person on site there. My frustration is, is numerous conversations that I've had with you were recorded, and your stories seem to change multiple times with that. And we've got thrown under the bus. The most frustrating part about it is nobody from this council has reached out and been concerned about it. But yet, I see it's being considered for a vote to move those funds over there. A project that you apologized to me and said that if you had known that this project was going to go the way that it was going to go, that by you guys allowing them to direct it and lead it, even though you guys did put the scope of work together, you did write the grant request for them, that you apologized to me, that this was not how you guys wanted to conduct business.
Mr. President, if I may, what I apologized for was not succeeding and bridging the conversation between you and the OJHS. So they didn't want to meet with you, you know, and that's your arrangement with them of some sort, then, you know, you got to take it up with them. I'll keep repeating that if you'd.
Yeah. And I'll just leave it with this. I mean, if anybody here wants to vote on this issue, I think it would be very unfair to the citizens, the taxpayers, to vote on this because ignorance doesn't mean, isn't just cause for innocence. And I think it's pretty sad that everybody wants to just stick their heads in the sand, turn from it, and run away from it. What I got to hear on the back, and especially the contractor that was hired, as you guys know, whose son was arrested for coming after us, attacking me, and is currently being prosecuted for it, I just think it's pretty sad that this is just even being considered at all. So looking forward to it, and hopefully this gets handled and voted correctly. Appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's, that's all of the people that have signed in to speak. Mr. Dunaway, it needs to be quick, please. Up to the microphone.
Okay. As a past employee of Toledo Edison Company, just so you guys know, and everybody out here understands, whether this data center gets built in Oregon, Ohio, or it's out on 582 in Bowling Green, or it happens to be outside Mickey's World in Florida, the push of the federal government has been to increase transmission in this country, most of it high lines. This energy plant we have over here, you have no guarantee that that electricity is coming to your house here in Oregon. It could be going to Cincinnati. It doesn't matter whether the data center is here in this city or it happens to be down in Georgia. If they have the money to buy the power, distribution and transmission in this country is such that the decisions for that are made in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, for this half of the country. And if they say every ounce of kilowatt that comes out of that power plant is going down to Georgia, that's where it'll go. That transmission and distribution is built just for that. And we are going to spend, I was making the comment, we haven't hit that part of the rate increase yet. That's coming in January. And when we get the bill, you're not going to like it. And we are going to be improving it even more to send it even further. So don't get the, don't get the thought that you build it here, the rates are going to go up here. The rates are going up. Do some research. Google what's happening in Indiana and Illinois. They are double where we're at right now on electricity. Double. And it's only in Indiana getting worse because Indiana doesn't have one single electrical plant online. At least we still have power plants.
Thank you, Mr. Dunaway.
Mr. President, if I could, just real quick on that point, you're correct. Wherever a data center is built, that cost, that electric cost is borne to the, by the, all of the residents regionally. It's regional, it's a regional cost. It's a regional rate. Transmission rates go up every year in January. That's every year. And they have been going steadily up. There's been a steady incline in that for the past several years. I would say that for the past decade, it's been a little bit more than most. And then every June, the capacity rates go up. And that's, so there's a transmission rate and a capacity rate, and they're both reevaluated based on the peaks of electric demand of the prior year. So January and June are the, our transmission and capacity rates are reset. So just wanted to clarify that.
Anybody that's speaking today, drive down Star Avenue. Star Avenue.
Mr. Dunaway, we need to, I understand, but if we're going to speak, we can't speak from there. We have to come up to the mic.
We had an outage here in Oregon. It was a little over half the city. We were out for about four hours. Part of that problem was transmission. And the proof of that is right over on Star Avenue. We have two temporary substations, in the substation on Star Avenue. You haven't got the bill for that yet. And those transformers that they're going to have to put in over there, they start at a million dollars and work their way up. So depending on what the amperage is going to be for this repair, there's going to be a big bill coming. Now, it's shared for the region. Everybody's going to help pay for that, but it's not going to be cheap. And I understand that it wasn't just this substation, it was two of them. So, you know, be careful.
Thank you.
We're thankful, like I said, we're thankful that our city was looking after us with the, with the, uh, way we're getting our electricity.
Thank you, Mr. Dunaway. We have 12 items on the agenda for tonight. The first item on the agenda for discussion is item 119 of 2025, being presented by Mayor Seferian and, uh, Fire Chief Clayton O'Brien, Chief O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Council, this ordinance is part of our capital equipment plan for 2025. It'll allow us to purchase the two power cots and two power loads, as well as the two stair chairs for our ambulances that we currently have on order. And although we won't see those ambulances until maybe late this year, it may be the beginning of next year, due to the expected price increase coming October 1st, uh, from Stryker, we wanted to get this ordinance in and be able to lock these prices in first before, and, uh, before those, before the price increase.
Thank you, Chief. Council, any questions or comments? Hearing none, I will seek a motion to move item 119 of 2025 to next week's agenda.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Pauliff.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauliff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Salander. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Salander. Uh, we have a motion by, um, Mrs. Pauliff, second by Mr. Salander to move item 19 of, 119 of 2025 to next week's agenda. Counsel, are there any objections? Hearing none. Item 119 of 2025 is moved to next week's agenda. The next item on the agenda for discussion is item 127, excuse me, being presented by Mayor Seferian and, uh, also our Fire Chief, um, Clayton O'Brien, Chief O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, this ordinance will allow us to apply for the CSX, uh, grant, uh, that we expect to apply for some extrication equipment.
Thank you. Counsel, uh, hearing, uh, no additional questions, I will seek a motion to move item 127 of 2025 to next week's agenda.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Pauliff.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Salander. We have a motion by, um, Mrs. Pauliff, second by Mr. Salander, to move item 127 of 2025 to next week's agenda. Counsel, are there any objections? Hearing none. Item 127 of 2025 is moved to next week's agenda. The next item on the agenda for discussion is item 128 of 2025, being presented by Mayor Seferian and City Administrator Joel Mezier. Mr. Mezier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so this ordinance would authorize us to, uh, amend the purchase and sale agreement that was, uh, approved by City Council last year with Capacity LLC, uh, which is the, uh, company that's, um, uh, they're here today as well to, uh, speak. But, uh, th- this is for the proposed data center site at the industrial park. Uh, so I was going to go through a, a real quick history for everybody. Um, you know, last year in November, uh, City Council approved of, of the original agreement. And, uh, subsequent to that, um, there were approvals to purchase five houses. And also, uh, what I'll refer to as the Graz Family Property, um, which is, uh, seven parcels in total. And for a total of, um, approximately, um, it was 1.2 million dollars for the, um, excuse me, for the Graz Family Property, uh, that was approved on November 12th of 2024. And then in March, uh, one of the properties that, uh, that would be 40, 4919 Corduroy Road was approved, uh, for purchase. And then, uh, the remaining four houses were approved. Uh, so we've been going through that process. And then subsequent to that, um, as we started to, uh, acquire those properties, we, uh, as the applicant, the city, as the applicant, um, uh, applied to rezone those, uh, seven parcels uh, on the corner of Win and Corduroy. I, I do want to bring up, uh, that, uh, at the, uh, Planning Commission meeting, there was a comment made about the, uh, rezoning of the property and, and that as being unconstitutional. So just to address that concern, um, the concern was raised about the rezoning process. The process is moving forward like it normally would for rezoning. When, when a property is rezoned, uh, typically it's, the applicant is the homeowner or the property owner. And, uh, in this case, um, we, we got, we entered into a, a contract that had a contingency in it. So the contingency said that this property had to be rezoned, acquired and rezoned. So the, the approval process to acquire the properties happened first. The process was started to acquire those properties and then the rezoning process started, so. And as such, uh, the Planning Commission did have the, the right to, uh, vote no on it too. That could have happened. Uh, they didn't, um, but, you know, they look at it from the zoning perspective and, and what's around in that, in that area. Right now it's zoned industrial, then, uh, it kind of segues into advanced manufacturing. The rezoning request is for the remaining, uh, 20 acres to be rezoned as, um, uh, advanced manufacturing to match, uh, what's around it. So that, I wanted to address that, um, but, um, you'll see in, in the, uh, amendment itself, as it, as it talks through each section, uh, I wanted to point out a, a couple of items, uh, before I asked, uh, the members from, uh, Capacity to come up and, uh, provide an update on the project. And, uh, also, uh, from your perspective, why, uh, this, uh, contract amendment is needed. But the, um, the two biggest things that pertain to the city, uh, one of them is the zoning contingency. Um, the contingency would be to extend that out another 60 days. Uh, the reason for that is, as we've been in conversation over the past year or so, working through a lot of the due diligence items that, uh, Capacity is working on, at some point in time, we had discussed coming back to City Council with a more comprehensive amendment to this, uh, to this agreement. Uh, so, uh, the timing of the, uh, rezoning wasn't as critical of an issue since there were other contingencies in this agreement that, uh, we, we knew that, uh, were going to fall short. And they'll get into some of the details of that. One of them has to do with the First Energy detailed load study. But, um, so one of them is the zoning contingency. Wouldn't take effect, um, uh, if, assuming, uh, uh, City Council approves of, uh, the zoning change, uh, on August 25th. That wouldn't take effect until 30 days after the, uh, the approval. So, uh, a little more time is needed for that. Uh, the other item is that the actual, uh, contract purchase price, uh, did go up $100,000. Uh, doesn't specify in the agreement as to why, but, uh, the, the reason for that is that was a request on our part to increase it because, um, I, I foresee in, in my mind, assuming that everything, uh, goes through the, the process, that, uh, there will be some, uh, property maintenance items that we'll have to address, uh, as a city. So as, uh, uh, and, and for the OEDF. You know, if something were to happen to one of the houses, let's say a window breaks or, um, somebody vacates the house and the grass gets long, somebody has to maintain it. So that's, that's the reason why. There's going to be expenses, uh, coming up that have to do with the, uh, property maintenance. And also if the city opts to, um, uh, demolish any of the structures, uh, prior to, uh, closing, uh, we can opt to do that as well. And the, the only reason I bring that up is, um, you know, that, that would be a choice, but that would be less, uh, taxes and arrears that the city would have to pay, uh, at closing. So, um, there's a little bit of benefit there. And, um, so we had asked that, uh, we increase the, uh, contract price, uh, for that reason. That's why it went from 17.3 million to 17.4 million. Outside of that, uh, those are the two main things, the zoning contingency and the, uh, uh, contract purchase price that I wanted to bring up. So, uh, Mr. President, I'd, at this time, I'd, I'd ask if, if it's okay if, uh, the members of the Capacity team could.
Most definitely.
Provide an update.
Thank you, Mr. Mezier.
Yep.
Just, uh, name an address when you, if you would, please. Or company, whatever.
John Martin, and I'm in Vienna, Virginia. And, uh, Mr. Mayor and Joel, and thanks for letting us come back and talk about our project. We're incredibly excited about. When you talk to me, you're talking to the user. So, um, so you can imagine the amount of investment we're going to make into this community is quite significant. So we have to be very cautious and dot every i and cross every t when it comes to due diligence. And we're to a point now, really, the, uh, hanging chad, so to speak, is First Energy. So would I wish First Energy would have worked a little faster? Absolutely. And, um, they picked up some pace in about the last 30 days. So we're really waiting on them to tell us, or confirm to us, the amount of power that we need. And more important, the, the way, the route that comes to our site. So once we have that in writing from them, because we can't go and start building a building if we don't have power. So we're waiting on them to give us what we want. Now they've, they've kind of hand shaken us and told us the power's there, it's going to work, but they have to go through their own process. So, um, the user, I'm on the phone with them. We're on the phone, uh, a couple of times a week. We're all ready to rock and roll, we're waiting on power. We're not waiting on the delivery power, we're waiting on piece of paper that says this is when the power's going to come. And we think that's probably, uh, 24 months for the first 150 mgs and then probably a couple of years for another 150 mgs. So pretty substantial project. What can I tell you? You got me here.
Yeah.
Will, anything you want to add about the site? That's really it. It's just a box. I think we're going to make the box pretty, but at the end of the day, it's just an industrial building with a lot of computers in it. That's, that's really it.
Thank you, John. Just name and company would be fine, please.
Yes, I will turn with Capacity LLC, and I, I live in Virginia. So, um, I mean, just to kind of add to John's point, so the reasons for the extensions, right, are some of these things are all related to power. And I met with you in November, I said energy was everything. And so we went through a process with First Energy. It took much longer than we anticipated. I'm happy to talk a little bit about those details, but, um, it just took us a while to get started. And so we're behind on that end of the process, which, um, the other contingencies they're asking for extensions for is are related to that. So with the, um, power, we need to know how much power we can get in before we can then size for how much bridging power, that's the gas that we might need. Because depending on the availability, it'll impact the scope of what we, what we might need for some of these other contingencies. The pipeline emissions are all, um, kind of correlated to that. So now, given that where we are in the process, we're asking for a load study contingency. They're moving now, like John said, you know, the last couple of weeks have been, uh, refreshing. First Energy is being very responsive, we're having active conversations. And we feel good about where this project is. And we feel strongly that everything's on track, delayed but on track. And we feel there's a good chance that, um, we will be, um, that we, depending on how First Energy, right, their timeline's like, you know, six to 12 months. Uh, this puts us at, uh, you know, with the extension, it puts us out to March 31st, the end of our study period, which we think should give us a good amount of cushion, um, given the pace that First Energy's, uh, proceeding at at this point. I'm happy to address any questions you might have about the project.
Counsel? No, you're, you're, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you all, uh, for your time. I really appreciate your confidence in, in us, and we really look forward to bringing this project to your community. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson? Just name and company or.
Thank you.
Address.
President? Gary Thompson, Regional Wealth Partnership. I'm going to give you my work address at Two Maritime Plaza, Toledo, Ohio, 43604. Uh, the Capacity team referenced First Energy. And in full disclosure, I want to let everybody know that First Energy is an investor in the Regional Wealth Partnership. At one point, they were our landlord for over 20 years. So we have a great working relationship with them. And if you don't study, uh, current electric utilities or First Energy in particular, they have had a massive, uh, turnover in staff and early retirements and lots of corporate changes to their, uh, company structure. And a lot of that came through the Economic Development Department. And those people that would be doing the work, the Capacity LLC, uh, has to be done. And those people used to be here locally in the Toledo area. They're now working out of Akron, so that has added some complications and time constraints to First Energy that it's not only this project, it's many projects, um, in, in the region that are dealing with those same issues. So it's not a surprise, uh, it's not anything unique to what Capacity's doing. First Energy is working as hard as they can and as fast as they can. And they're also looking, I think, to hire additional staff to, to, to solve this problem, uh, that they have operationally. So I just wanted to let you know there were no, um, surprises or unique things or any associated risks that First Energy should just follow their normal process. And as Will said, I think, uh, things are on track now, so we're happy to see everybody speaking the same language. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
And, and I'd kind of like to address this to John, uh, Will and Gabe. Uh, 'cause the, the term or the phrase, uh, falling in dire straits is a term I used, and it's been presented, uh, here several times out of context. Because what I did say was, the city, um, the way we do business or way we get revenues from some of our industrial users, their, their ways have changed, leaving us less revenues. Um, we have, uh, made wise investments and we have, um, had the capability of making reserves in the city. So at times when we do spend more money in a year than we bring in, we use those reserves. And when we seen the way some of the businesses do business here, leaving us with lesser returns, we knew that unless we get new revenue streams, like a data center, for instance, we could fall into dire straits. And, uh, that, that could be the case. But, uh, we invested in land and with foresight to try to, uh, go after new revenue streams before we fall into any financial hardships. We are not in dire straits, but we could, like any city, fall into it. So if, uh, their administration isn't looking out for the future, anybody can fall into it, just like any business. And, uh, so that's why we enjoy you being here. 'Cause, uh, you represent the opportunity for us not to fall into that condition. And, uh, just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All set then, Mr. Mezier?
I'm all set unless anybody has any questions.
I'm going to answer that right now. Counsel, any questions, comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Salander?
It's more of a request really than anything, but, uh, there's a type of meeting, like a charrette, where stakeholders or people, citizens and so forth, could come forward and be able to have it, almost like a town hall with the data center folks to be able to answer some questions and have some good, honest dialogue back and forth. I think it would be very beneficial, uh, to all of us to be able to, if we could facilitate something like that. I think there's a lot of, I mean, there's obviously a lot of fear out there, but, you know, for some with the electricity bills and water and so forth. But I just think if we could have something like that, where we could have some good, where that's the only topic we're talking about. We're just having a, just a honest and open conversation between all of us and be able to maybe answer some questions and maybe ease some of those fears along the way. I just think would be very beneficial if, if that's something we could do.
Thank you, Mr. Salander. Mr. Mezier?
Yeah, Mr. Pres, Mr. President, Mr. Salander, um, I, I think that's something we, we could do and we should do. Uh, at least have, I do have something typed up. It is under review right now that kind of answers a lot of the questions that were asked at the, uh, Planning Commission meeting and then subsequent to that. So, um, it's under review right now and, uh, it's, it's done. It's just, I'd, I'd love to send something out, but, um, excuse me. Uh, but I, I do, I think that would be beneficial, that, you know, we can kind of at least have that, uh, conversation and, and whatever questions come up that we don't have, that everybody doesn't have answers to, then, uh, we can, you know, sort it out and get answers back at some point. So, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Counsel, anything further?
Mr. President?
Mr. Drake?
No, Mr. Drake. He, he beat me.
Go ahead.
Kind of to go off what, uh, Mr. San, uh, uh, Steve said, Salander. I've had a few, uh, residents, uh, ask me about the, uh, the data plants and this, that, and the other. And, um, I think you could probably ask all seven of us sitting here on council what their take on it is or what information they have. they have. You'd probably get seven different answers. And some of these individuals are ones that, the three and a half years I've been on council, never ask a question about anything, and they made it real clear to me that, I guess the big date is, what is it, August 25th, I think, is the big day. They just wanted to make sure that, kind of what Steve said, and Joel, who's ever presenting it, I know I came to the zoning meeting when they had it, with the, in front of the zoning board, for a short while, I had to leave. But just hopefully, whatever questions are going to be asked, whoever the presenter is, or I don't know if, you know, I remember Guy Smiley from Sesame Street, he used to do interviews and stuff similar to that. So I just wondered if, you know, who's ever going to come and present this, has a good, strong case, and they're able to answer every and any question that's asked. That's just what I, the feedback I'm getting from people, and I agree with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. Mrs. Ackerman?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry I didn't ask previous to this, but I started wondering, what, in the paragraph where it says about the gas, natural gas, a new gas, natural gas power plant to service the project, I never assume, I know you should never assume, but I was thinking that that was the second clean energy plant? Is this an additional plant, or is this, is that in reference to the second clean energy plant? He knows, I should just ask you.
I'm going to take it. So, and, so there were two kind of power plant options, if you will, to serve the project, right? There is one that I believe is getting some traction, right, that is separate from us, it's a CCGT, combined cycle gas, right? And so that's on a different property, it's not a part of our project. What we're looking at, in fact, is the reason, reason we came to the region, is because power grid all over the country is, you know, having a hard time keeping up with growth. And so what we looked at was a bridging solution to use natural gas. So what that would be is, we would have onsite generation, right, up tuck near the, you know, the existing power plant, right? We're just looking at, as far away from the homes as we can get, right? We want to have it in the heavy industrial zoned area, we're not asking to rezone anything to heavy industrial, so we can mitigate the impacts. And then it would be bridging power. What I mean by that is that it's an ability for us to generate onsite generation with natural gas until the power grid can get there hooked up in sufficient capacity. And then that, we anticipate that will either go to a backup for the facility, or it'll become a peaker solution for First Energy to help stabilize the grid in times of like, you know, there's a heat going on, everyone's got their AC going, this can be a solution. What we want to do with our model is to be not just coming and say, hey, give us a bunch of power, we want to provide onsite solutions so that we can help to stabilize the grid and keep, keep everything on track. And so that's what that is referring to.
Thank you, that explains it very well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackerman. Counsel, any additional questions? Hearing none, I will, I will seek a motion to move item 128 of 2025 to next week's agenda.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Horniak?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Horniak?
Second.
Was that Mrs. Ackerman?
No.
Oh, Ms. Pauloff, I'm sorry.
We're all still related.
Well, hearing issues. We have a motion by Mr. Horniak and second by Ms. Pauloff to move item 128 of 2025 to next week's agenda. Counsel, are there any objections? Hearing none, item 128 of 2025 is moved to next week's agenda. Our next item on the, for discussion is item 129 of 2025, being presented by Mayor Seferian and City Administrator Joe Major. Mr. Major?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me flip back to correct page here. This ordinance would authorize the city to basically transfer $30,000 to the OEDF, and this would be for the Oregon Jerusalem Historical Society demolition project. As you recall, earlier this year, the, or I should say last year, I believe it was last year's budget, actually, the $30,000 was allocated to the Oregon Jerusalem Historical Society. They were going to use it originally for renovation work on their, on their building. And then the opportunity to apply for grant funds to demolish the former St. Mark's Church on Grasser Street came up. We assisted them with applying for a grant application, it was awarded, and then at their request, they wanted to shift that $30,000 to be matching funds for their project. So this is actually that budgeted matching fund amount. So this is $30,000 that was already budgeted, that was planned for matching funds for the demolition of the former St. Mark's Church. So the reason why the OEDF is involved, also if you recall, there were not enough votes on city council, there were some extensions that had to be made, and there weren't enough members that could vote on it. So we asked very nicely to the OEDF to step in and, and front the, since it is a reimbursement grant, to front the funds for the demolition and then get the reimbursement from the state after the fact. The reason for that is the OJHS does, just does not have the funds available to pay the, pay the amount for the, all of the demolition work. So they just don't have that amount in, on hand. So I know that was discussed prior to this, too. So we asked them to step in, because we were going to step in, if you recall, and then that's when there weren't enough votes. So the OEDF did step into this, and this would be to move the $30,000 over to them so they could use it as the matching component for this project. And then with the OJHS, OEDF would seek reimbursement from the state for the work that's been done.
Thank you, Mr. Major. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Mr. Drake?
Yeah, Mr. Major, who, or maybe Mr. Roman would know, who was the company that tore, did the demolition? Or is going to do it?
Mr. President, Mr. Drake, I believe it's Pascal Bin. Is that, is that correct? Okay, yeah, Pascal Bin was the contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Ackerman?
This question is for Ms. Papura. Do we know, at this point, going into this next round of votes, who can and who cannot, in your professional opinion, vote? So we're going to end up in the same boat again? I know Mr. Drake had, you know, he had an excuse, absence from voting, I believe at the time, but has anything changed?
Mr. President, Ms. Ackerman, the same recommendations as I had before, as you and Mr. Salander are still members, I would recommend that you abstain from voting, just as Ms. Pauloff, at the time that this was discussed, she, she is no longer a trustee, however, yes. So my recommendation would be that both of you abstain, as well as Ms. Pauloff.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything further? Mr. Major, I hate putting you on the spot here, but I got to, I just want to clear some things up. Mr. Gray was up here, could you enlighten us on what the issue is with Mr. Gray and the Oregon Jerusalem Historical Society?
Well, I can, I can do it to the best of my ability. I don't know all of the details of what happened, but I do know that when the Historical Society first got into this, they sought quotes before we got the grant. And with those quotes, that's what we used as a basis for how much funding we would apply for. And the scope of work was to tear down the church portion, but leave the back portion, I don't know, the annexed portion, or whatever you want to call it. So, you know, my understanding is that, you know, there were quotes, and the Oregon Jerusalem Historical Society was, at the time, was very adamant that they wanted to use Groundworks Excavating to perform the work. Even though they weren't the lowest quote, they were confident in that, in that contractor to move forward. The land bank was okay with it, we had a meeting with them to talk about it and make sure everything was on the up and up. At some point after that, there was a meeting with Groundworks, city staff, and the Historical Society. We thought things were on the right path. We had another meeting after that, and that's the other meeting that he referred to in April. You know, again, and that's where Rodney helped step, stepped in, helped refine, I would say, just refine the scope of work or develop the scope of work that they used for the basis of a contract. And at that point, we, again, we thought things were moving along fine, and, you know, I don't know what happened, but the Oregon Jerusalem Historical Society decided they wanted to go with a different contractor. So that's, that's what I have.
Thank you. Counsel, anything further? Hearing none, I will seek a motion to move item 129 of 2025 to next week's agenda?
Mr. President?
Mr. Horniak?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Horniak?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wallensack. We have a motion by Mr. Horniak and second by Mr. Wallensack to move item 129 of 2025 to next week's agenda. Counsel, are there any objections? Hearing none, item 129 of 2025 is moved to next week's agenda. The next item on the agenda is, for discussion, is item 130 of 2025, being presented by Mayor Seferian and our finance director, Nick Roman. Mr. Roman?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could, could I speak on items 130 through 136?
Please.
All right, thank. So these are all the annual assessments that we will levy for multiple different reasons. These are done annually. We do have a couple that are, that we haven't seen in two years. Two of them are for nuisance abatements. One of them was for an asbestos survey on a property on Navarre, and that is for $600. There was another one that was for a house demolition nuisance, 145 North Fargo Street. The rest of them, we typically see, but last year, we did a great job in collecting all the water and sewer accounts, so there are no delinquent accounts last year. This year, we did, there are three accounts that will need to go on the assessment roll, and that's total of $794.46. The other four, we have seen every year. One is for the maintenance of drainage facilities in different subdivisions around the city. One of those was higher than the past several years, and that's for Heritage Estates, and they had a meter replacement that was needed for repairs for the drainage facility. Other than that, everything was about the same amount as prior years. The other one that we, council voted on in November, is for the cost of maintaining the sanitary sewer lines throughout the city. That's where, if you recall, we were charging 28 cents per front foot for all the sanitary sewer lines around the city, and our average cost to maintain those lines was about 75 cents. So back in November, we passed an ordinance to change that rate from 28 cents to 75 cents. So there's a, there's a significant increase on that dollar amount. It's up to $530,000 is what will be assessed this year, where in prior years, I believe it was just under $200,000 that we were assessing for. The other one is for street lighting, which we have seen every year, there's actually a slight decrease on that one. Back in 2023, there was a month where we were left off the aggregate. So there was a month without the aggregate, and so we paid a little bit more. So in 2024, that, that bill did go down a little bit. And then the last one is for the cutting of noxious weeds, and that dollar amount is $5,003.20. If you have any questions, I'm here, and then Angie is the one who prepares these, so she will hopefully be able to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you, Nick, and Angie. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Mr. Drake?
Yeah, this is for probably Mr. Roman.
Paul? You got caught.
Paul, I was just curious, I know, I know when I worked for the city, the street department always have backup pumps. Are all the pumps pretty much the same in each station?
They're similar. It just depends, usually there are two pumps that switch, they alternate, yes, and usually they're submersible pumps, so.
And they do have extras on hand?
Well, we always have backup pumps in an emergency to come out and, you know, the pumps that you have to prime and so on. Yeah, we've always had those, and we always have those available. But obviously, you want to make sure that the pump stations are working, so every once in a while, we do have to replace something. You know, I know in Park Place, we had some replacements, the whole railing system, the getting the pumps out failed. Now that'll, I met a resident this week, asked about that, and I said, well, that'll be a next year's bill. So Park Place will have a heavier bill next year as well. But anyway, so I don't know if I'm answering your question, but.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. Counsel, anything further?
Mr. President, I do have one comment.
Yes.
If I may, on the street lighting, I think everybody saw this in your weekly update, but the, the, on the one assessment that has to do with street lighting, First Energy is still moving forward slower than what, what we had anticipated, and that's just the truth, that's just a fact. Originally, they had said that the process would take about 18 months. We're almost at the 18-month mark now, and they're just through phase one. But the longest part of that process was that they had to do an engineering study to figure out what lights needed to be replaced, where they're located, what types of lights they needed to purchase. I know that there's, there's work that goes into that, but it, that took quite a bit longer than what we had originally anticipated. So my understanding is now, though, they're completed with phase one of four of the, of the change outs. So, but again, the, the longest part of that, I don't expect that to take another 18 months. In fact, we're anticipating getting the second invoice from them any day now to start phase two. So once we get the invoice, we can pay that invoice, and then they will order the lights, and then they'll take it through the process again for the second phase of the light change out. So I just wanted to point that out. And we should see a decrease in that electric bill as the lights come on, so then the assessments in, subsequent to those lights being turned on and being changed over, the bills should change at some point, too. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, anything further?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Ackerman?
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Major. I was, this is for Nick Roman. If, if people have, and I'm aware, there are streetlights that are out at great length or chronically out, going out, is the assessment just across the border, do we have a gauge to determine, like, to not assess someone if they've not had a working streetlight, or, just, I'm just curious about that?
Unfortunately, we do not. We're not able to tell to that detail, no. We're not.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I just, yeah, how, how could you? But I was just curious, because we have, we do have some that, in waiting for the switch to the LED, they've, they've not had a streetlight for quite a long time, so it wouldn't be fair to tax them on it, but I guess, you know, they're going to get their great.
Yeah, no, I understand that, yeah, unfortunate. We wish we could get that level of detail on these, but with the sheer number of lights, it's impossible to get that.
Well, thank you.
And Mr. President, if I may.
Mr. Major?
Ms. Ackerman. So the city, streetlights typically are assessed citywide to everybody, because everybody gets the benefit, since it covers the whole city and every street, and everybody, in theory, uses all of the streets for transportation. So that's, that's why they're assessed that way, just blanket citywide, every, every consumer gets assessed the same amount.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Ackerman, thank you, Mr. Major. Anything further? Hearing none, I will, I'm going to seek a motion to add to next week's agenda items 130, 131, 132, 133, 134, 135, and 136. Counsel, need a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Mr. Wallensack?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I make a motion to move those items to next week's regular meeting agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Wallensack?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Pauloff. We have a motion to move by Mr. Wallensack and second by Ms. Pauloff to move items 130 Pauliff to move items 130, 131, 132, 133, 134, 135, and 136 of 2025 to next week's agenda. Any objections? Hearing none. Those items, do I need to say them again, or we should be fine? Okay. Hearing none, items 130 through 136 are moved to next week's agenda. Our last item on the agenda is item 137 of 2025, and that's being presented by Mayor Seferian and our public service director, Paul Roman. Mr. Roman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is needed to submit two grant applications to the Ohio Public Works Commission. The applications are due September 5, and the draft applications are attached in Exhibit A. The first application is for the Star Avenue resurfacing project. This project goes from the West Corp limit to Whittlesey and includes Wheeling Street from Northvale to Randall. That's all resurfacing, but from the West Corp line near 280 all the way to Earlwood is a full replacement of Star Avenue, and that is about half of the cost. Total project cost is 1.6 million. We do have a grant from the Federal Highway Administration for $500,000, but with the OPWC, we're asking for a $600,000 grant from OPWC. And then the second project is the Star Edition Waterline Replacement Project. The project area includes all the water lines in the block bounded by Wheeling Street, Seaman Road, Berlin, and Northvale. There is a map included in Exhibit A that shows it, about 13,000 feet of, a lot of 6-inch and 8-inch pipe replaced with brand-new 8-inch. We do, are looping some lines as well. Total project cost is 2.2 million. We are asking for a $500,000 grant, and that's really just based on scoring. I wish I could ask for more, but I don't think I'd score well. And, but we do also have a low-interest loan through the EPA for that project. So, those, you know, when you have another grant or another low-interest loan, that does help you score in these grant applications. So, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Counsel? Hearing no questions or concerns, I will seek a motion to move item 135, excuse me, 137 of 2025 to next week's agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Drake.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauliff. We have a motion by Mr. Drake, second by Mrs. Pauliff to move item 137 of 2025 to next week's agenda. Counsel, are there any objections? Hearing none, item 137 of 2025 is moved to next week's agenda. With all of the items and agendas being considered, we will now move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President, but I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Major.
No report, Mr. President, just that we do have that further item before counsel also.
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Major. Ms. Pappora.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Pappora. Mr. Roman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think all of you are aware that we closed Wind Road for about a week and a half, and we had, purpose of that was to bore a water line under the Norfolk Southern Railroad tracks. And, well, we received the bill this last week for both flagging and construction monitoring. The cost is around $30,000, and with that, we need an ordinance to pay that bill. So, my ask is to bring that in next week. We'll provide details for you, and you'll see that. And so, you know, it'll show my love for Norfolk Southern, being sarcastic. But I tell you, it, but the project has done very well, and we are under budget, which is a good thing. So, it'll be the only other additional ordinance we need to really close out the project, so I wanted to bring that up. And I did get up, and I don't always like to do that when other people are talking, but I just thought maybe it's a good idea to have a committee meeting for the data center, if that was possible, maybe next Monday. That way, it can answer a lot of questions. So, I just brought that up to Mr. Horniac, and I didn't know if anyone could be available, but that's why I went and talked to him, just so you know, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Mr. Horniac.
No report from my standing committee, but following up on what Mr. Roman had said, yeah, he had made the suggestion of possibly, or three gentlemen that are guests here this evening may have some limited time available, possibly into next week. So, my apologies for getting up in the middle of the meeting, but I didn't want to drop it on them without at least asking them availability for that. So, I'll ask with the other members of counsel and the administration if we would like to try to call for a committee meeting of the Economic Development Committee for next Monday, which would put it in advance of the rezoning vote that'll come on the 25th, for a town hall Q and A type session. It may be one or multiple members of their team, and there may be an electronic component to that, just based on logistics and travel schedules and who's where. So, I guess I'm kind of putting it out there for feelings on whether we want to try to pull that together for next week. I do know we had talked about doing something in September, but thought if we want to do that, I'd be glad to do that. I just want to get some input from you guys. They basically confirmed their willingness to participate, either one or all, being here, like I said, might be in person, might be electronic, but for a town hall Q and A. So, what's your pleasure?
Thank you, Mr. Horniac. Counsel?
Mr. President.
Mr. Salander.
I guess my only concern would be, are we going to have enough time? I mean, if it's, if the planning commission was any sort of example of what it could be, I mean, I don't, that's the only concern I have, I guess, is just.
You mean time?
Time for us to have the conversation.
With it?
Yeah, correct. Before our regular council meeting. That'd be the only concern.
Well, if we did it at, like, 5:00 or 5:30, that would still give us 90 to 120 minutes.
Too early.
I just don't know, with that being said, if people would be able to get here by that, you know, people are, most people, many people are working, you know, until 5. That's just my only concern.
Understand.
Yeah.
So, if I'm kind of hearing you're right, maybe a little bit more lead time so people could plan accordingly? So, that September date is kind of, okay?
That would be fair, yeah.
Fair enough.
Also, just to get the word out so that people know, you know, as well, just to be fair on that, too.
Okay. And for those that don't know, Ms. Ackerman and Mr. Salander are both members of that committee. Beth?
Ms. Ackerman, do you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you. I would rather see a more casual public meeting setting where, like you said, plenty of notice in the press, online, on our website, our city website, and it gives people an opportunity to really feel heard instead of 5:30. I mean, works for farmers sometimes of the year, but I hear a lot of complaints about the time when meetings are held. And I know it's easy to say, like, well, put it on your schedule. Well, most folks can't adjust it, you know, with, for something like that, it'd have to be a medical emergency. But I'd like to see something in the evening around, you know, 7 o'clock or something, where people could get their families fed and have babysitters and, you know, we make it as convenient for the public as possible, if that's possible.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Other members of council or administration?
Sorry, Mr. President, I think I probably overstepped in there.
Nope, no, you're fine.
Yeah.
I have no issues with any time that you want to put it on.
Okay. Well, if we don't want to race to next Monday, let's table that to another time. Gentlemen, if you're open, we'll get with you on schedules, try to maybe set something up, have it in a, I'll say, less formal environment, maybe not as, whether it's a committee meeting or not a committee meeting, but we can certainly work towards a Q and A type of public forum. Okay? With that, I have no further report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Horniac. Mrs. Pauliff?
Thank you, Mr. President. This past Saturday, the fire and police put on the heroes and hot rods. Wow. It was a great event. Very well attended, and you couldn't ask for a better day. It was, it was really great to showcase the fire equipment, the police. It was just, it was really a great event. So, great job, all of you, really. We do have a lot to be proud of with our safety services. Thank you very much for that. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauliff. Mr. Wallensack.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wallensack. Mrs. Ackerman.
Mr. President, I apologize to everyone for missing the last, missing last week's EPA meeting regarding EnviroSafe with the new name. We had a animal fatality in the family. But anyway, I do apologize that I missed that, and I would ask that Mr. Roman or Mr. Major who did attend, if you could give us a brief synopsis of that meeting, please?
Mr. President, I'll, yes, Ms. Ackerman. So, yes, we did attend, Mr. Roman and I did attend. There was, there's a permit modification at EnviroSafe, which is the land, owned now by Crystal Clean, the new company name. And the permit modification was for adding a building, basically, for storage. Right now, they currently have outdoor storage of drums, but this would be an indoor facility where they could process, they could unload, store, and then process some of the liquids that would render them liquid solid, and then they could, they could apply to the, into the landfill. So, that's the basic gist of it. The EPA representative was there, Ms. Ketterman. I can't remember her first name, but her contact information is in that notice as well. So, you know, all the information's there. They basically gave probably about 10 slides worth of presentation on what the building was going to look like, where it was going to be, and what they were going to do inside of it. So, no, there's no new waste that's coming in. It's all the same wastes that they've, you know, processed, treat, whatever you want to call it, and then apply to the landfill. Quantities, it's not an increase in any quantities that they would be bringing, that they're regulated on. They have a capacity of a certain amount of quantity that they're able to put into the facility, but they're still well below what their capacity is. So, whether or not that's an increase of volume or just a modification of volume, that's not changing in the permit. It's just the facility, the storage, and the treatment process. So, they're adding a building.
And Mr. Roman, I believe you said that you were very happy to see them doing this. So, I wanted to convey that to the public, that this is a, what they're doing is something that the city believes is in the city's best interest. So, I just, if you could just let us know more about that.
Well, I just, you know, I felt, sitting there, I felt like they should have done it 30 years ago. You know, it, I think when they get this, these wastes that are a liquid form, they solidify it into a solid, and they would put it in these tanks. And before, before they landfill it, they, these tanks could just sit outside. And I like the fact that it's completely in a storage building. It's, the air is filtered, you know, it is, the building, it's, you know, impervious, concrete with membranes. I mean, it, it just seems like, like Crystal Clean's really putting money into this place, and this operation seems way cleaner to me. That's all.
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, Mr. President, I just wanted to remind everyone that the tree commission is going to meet August 19 at 4:00 PM. So, that's why I'm a little sensitive about the time of public meetings, because we have a real, you know, nobody can make 4:00 PM except for retirees and farmwives. So, I do want to hope we move towards some more convenient times for people to become involved moving forward. But it's at 4:00 PM in the community room, which is near the police station, and everyone is welcome. So, thank you. That ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Ackerman. Mr. Salander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing from my standing committee. The only thing really is, I'm really surprised nobody said anything. The Saturday is Boomfest, so don't forget on August 9, Boomfest, come out and have a good time, some music and some, some family fun and some excellent fireworks. So, I hope to see you out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salander, but I believe that's August 8, correct?
No, it's 9.
It is a 9. Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Salander. Mr. Drake.
No report from my committee. Just a couple things. I know I asked Joel the weekend of the U.S. Amputees when they were here playing softball, if there was still going to be, there was rumor that there might be a golf cart parade. I was wondering if that was still in the works, or, I'm thinking about getting one, or, a golf cart parade?
Mr. Drake, Mr. President, is this for Boomfest, you mean?
Right, yeah.
No, nobody, nobody.
Okay, somebody sent me a screen, a spacebook or whatever they call it, online. I don't normally, no, I just was curious. And also, is there a way, because I've had some people that live in Eastmoreland, new and old, how those trees got whacked down, and I explained to them how they were planted right over the sewers. Is there any plan to replace them eventually?
I need to go to the tree commission and see if they'll agree to put trees in.
She don't know.
Yeah, it was always the plan to do that. Obviously, not over the storm sewer, not in the way of anything else, and certainly not sweet gum trees, I can tell you that, you know. I think, yeah, we want a tree that won't haunt everybody later on. So, yeah, I think it was the plan to put trees back in that boulevard. We just want to be careful where you put it.
It's a good subject for tree commission.
Get some artificial trees.
Is that it, Mr. Drake?
I think so. Let me see. I got, sometimes it's hard to read my writing. I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. I have nothing from my standing committee, but we do have some further business before counsel, the America 250 Committee. Mr. Major.
Thank you, Mr. President. This council member had reached out and asked what the update is on this. As you recall, this was brought up at the end of one of the council meetings, and what is happening with the America 250 Committee since the city of Oregon. Just for everybody's reference out here, America 250 is the, next year, that is the semi-quinsentennial celebration of the United States, the 250th anniversary. So, there is, the federal government has put together a program to organize some events around the America 250, and we did register as an America 250 community. And there are some events. So, there's the federal version, and then the state has a designated group that sort of coordinates efforts to celebrate around the America 250. That is something, they have monthly themes and, you know, just kind of promotions of different cities and what they're doing. So, one of the recommendations of that, since we have the designation, is to establish a committee. It's really, really loose. There's no guidelines. It's not like you have to have formal legislation for this or anything like that. From what I remember talking with one of the representatives at the state level, it's, you know, they said it was like a five-to-seven-member committee that, you know, would help coordinate and plan around some of the themed events scheduled for next year. So, you know, so that's the little bit of background for everybody that's in here or listening that is unfamiliar with it. I think, at this point, I think it would be good, this is my opinion, for city council to select one or two representatives, you know, elected officials to be on this committee. The only other group that has reached out to me directly is the Oregon Jerusalem Historical Society. Makes sense, being a historical society to be part of this. They had requested to have representation on the committee as well. So, that would, as a start, my recommendation would be to maybe select one or two council members to be on the committee. We could see from the historical society if they wanted to have a member on the committee, and then have the three or four of us sort of put together, you know, figure out a way how we want to assemble the remaining committee members, unless anybody has any other thoughts on this council to select the designees. And that way, the committee can get together and start planning around some of the events. So, that's the best I got right now. That's, again, there's no formal legislation that's needed, no formal appointments by city council. It's just, you know, hey, every community can, has the freedom to choose, freedom to choose their committee on their own. So, I'll leave it at that and open up for questions or if anybody has comments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Drake.
Yeah.
Mr. Drake?
Yeah, I know I spoke to Mr. Major about this, I don't know, a few days ago. I think it would be good to have, obviously, citizens. I don't know how you'd pick them, but citizens, I think, would be good. I'd probably rather have more citizens on it than politicians. And I also, I know I ran this by, about having maybe a high school kid or a junior high student or students be involved with it, because probably if they're young enough, they'll be able to see 25 years later. So I'm just throwing that out, that's just my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drake.
Mr. President, Mr. Drake, I think you mentioned, too, maybe having somebody from one of the, you know, veteran organizations possibly as a member as well. So I can't remember if that was you, Mr. Drake, that I spoke with about that, or if it was someone else, but.
I don't think so.
Oh, okay.
But I would be good with it.
Yeah, it might have been somebody else then.
Yeah, that's fine.
Couldn't remember, but, yeah, somebody from a certain veteran organization that was a thought as well.
That'd be good. Thank you.
Mr. Major, are you the, going to head this committee? I, and I don't mean by, I mean, who's ever interested can contact you for that? Or were you planning to be on it, or somebody else from the administration?
Mr. President, yes, I was planning to be a part of it, just to, you know, somebody from staff. Because there is, if there is coordination of events, you know, there's likely going to be some city involvement and coordination through city and staff and resources put into this. So, but again, that's, you know, be up to the committee. And I, but I do think that there needs to be some representation.
Well, I think it'd be nice if you could at least chair it, you know, and then who's ever interested can contact you about being on it, and then we can take it through a vote of council or something like that. Because I would, I would love to be on it if, if it comes down to that. But I mean, if there's other people that are interested in it as well, they can contact you and we can send something out to find out others as well.
Yep, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, and that's fine, that's a great starting point. Yeah, they can reach out to me directly, call the office, or email me if they're, if they're interested in being a part of this, and, you know, we can go from there.
I gave you my call.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, anything further? With, if there is no further business before counsel, I seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauliff. Second by Mr. Horniac. Counsel, any objections? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.